Could everybody please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notification of this meeting is provided by advertising in the record and posting notice in Borough Hall and the superintendent's office. I hereby call to order the public meeting of the Littleberry Board of Education, Thursday, February twenty, twenty twenty five, at seven oh two P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Manelli.
Here.
Mr. Fratoli. Mr. Pyros. Mr. Khalid.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Lusuzzo.
Here.
Mr. Borisak.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mrs. Bradley.
Here.
This August. We have a forum.
It resolved that the Littleberry Board of Education approves the minutes of the regular public meeting held on January sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion? Both.
Mr. Manelli.
Yes.
Mr. Fratoli. Pyros is absent. Mr. Kanon.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Lusuzzo.
Yes.
Mr. Borisak.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradley.
Yes.
Uh, especially.
Uh, it resolved that the Littleberry Board of Education approves the minutes of the regular public meeting, or the special meeting, rather, on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Manelli.
Yes.
Fratoli. Yes. Uh, Mr. Kanon.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Lusuzzo.
Yes.
Mr. Borisak.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradley.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to Mr. Peripato to provide his superintendent's report.
All right, we can start with Students of the Month. Our grade six. Month is Ethan Balapati. Is that anyway? So the student grade six had the following things to say about Ethan. He's a responsible student and a hard worker. She's consistently shown a strong record. Please her sign. Great. Well, if her classmates just. Congratulations. On January three seventh, Students of the Month. In the. He through the grades of an extra long thing to say about him. Her classmates, she works hard in all of her classes. She perseveres and faces challenges. She's humble to all of her teachers. All right, and our grade eight, January two of the month, is Annalee Valdado. And Annalee, the student grading and the following things to say about you. She is hardworking. She is thoughtful and resilient. She is caring to her peers and her teachers. She has really stepped up this marking period. Her work ethic is excellent. And her work is top notch. Congratulations. All right. Uh, at this time, we'll have the, uh, order report. Bradley. All right, you know what? We're gonna, I'm gonna go out of order if you don't mind. Whatever. Yeah. All right, Kara. Welcome back. I know it's been a long basketball season. Uh, but it is, uh, now you're, you have the floor for your student representative reports.
Back to us. Parnations were wrapped and delivered by numbers which bring smile to many faces of honor. You'd like to thank Mr. Borisin for donating the flowers for. This past week, students participated in random acts of kindness. Along with team calling bases, students were charged to do a random act of kindness such as complimenting someone or subsidizing things. Thank you for school coaches for organizing this event. Recently, the Littleberry Middle School launched its first activity. Students have participated in activities such as volleyball, basketball, watching a movie, karaoke. Thank you for our leadership for organizing the event and for our teachers for allowing their time to make it to that loss. We look forward to the next one. Finally, our girls and boys' basketball teams are reaching the end of this season very quickly. We would like to congratulate those who wear and the girls' basketball team.
Great job. Thank you very much. Some other things, uh, the hip report for since our last board meeting, Washington School has one reported, uh, unfounded, or a school has. And the preliminary budget meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March eighteenth at seven P M. Uh, that will also be a regular board meeting as well as the preliminary budget and our regular meeting for March. And I just wanted to highlight one additional thing that we had, uh, South Bergen Jointure joined our girls' and boys' basketball program today, uh, to participate in, in their only game of the season for South Bergen Jointure, but to also work with our students. Uh, it's always a, a really nice, like, hour and a half that they go in there. Uh, I think both, both districts gonna get a lot out of it. And.
All right, no problem. Um, so on behalf of the board, we just want to congratulate all the students of the month, as well as their parents and family. Um, we are going to get into for board-related matters, so you're welcome to leave if you'd like to. You're welcome to stay, but we just wanted to let you know, first, congratulations, and you're welcome to leave any time. Right, so I'll now open it up to, um, Mr. Gomez for his board secretary's report.
Good evening, everyone. So fiscally, we've loaded January's books. So we have those reports done. The audit is complete. I have uploaded. We bought it onto the state's website tonight. Our order was joining us at this presentation. So in the budget, so we're meeting on my, with the budget preliminary to the county. The last date for county approval is April twenty first. Uh, public, the earliest public hearing would, would be, uh, the twenty fourth of April, so there's a window of about a week. We haven't decided yet, uh, when we're gonna do that. The last day to have a public hearing on the budget is May seventh. And we have to adopt by May fourteenth. So right now, we have a, a bid out for the unit ventilators in the building. So that was advertised in the paper on February thirteenth. We have a pre-bid comp. And the bid opening will be on March twentieth in the morning. The second good news is we will be. Okay. Uh, we met with, uh, Machios, our food service provider. Uh, we're thinking about moving the kitchen that's out in the annex into the lunchroom, so we'll be working on that. So food service. So Memorial School, total meals in for January of twenty twenty four, we serve three thousand six oh four. Twenty twenty five, we serve four thousand four hundred and two. Uh, Washington School, forty two seventy one in twenty twenty four, same time, January. Fifty four hundred and eight meals this January. We received a subsidy from the federal government and state in the amount of fifty seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars for the month of January. January twenty six thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and four cents. Here to date profit, a hundred and three thousand three seventy-five and fifty-four. Last year, we. We're well on our way to having a much more successful program. So that's all I have about a president.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gomez.
Oh, Andrew, can you join us? This is Mr. Andrew Ferenti. He's from, uh, Lurch, N C, and Bliss.
Okay, uh, thanks for having me. Um, we have completed your audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We issued two reports. Um, the larger report is your annual comprehensive financial report. And then the smaller report would be for would be any findings and recommendations, if any. As far as the annual comprehensive financial report's concerned, um, it's primarily made up of four sections. The first section would be the introductory section, um, which is a brief description of the district prepared by management. Uh, the second section would be the management discussion and analysis, which is your financial statements in a narrative form. The third section would be your financial section, which would include an auditor's opinion, um, various financial statements and footnotes to the financial statements. And then the last part of the annual comprehensive financial report would be your statistical section, which would include miscellaneous statistics of both the borough and the school district. Uh, as I indicated, there's an auditor's opinion attached to your financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. That opinion is an unmodified opinion. What that means is that your financial statements are fairly stated and free of material misstatement. Okay, that's a clean opinion. That's the opinion you want to receive on an annual basis. Um, what I would like to briefly do is discuss the district's fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Um, the district ended the year with seven point nine million in fund balance. That fund balance is reserved or restricted for several different purposes. I'll, I'll briefly discuss those at this point. Um, the first designation would be for capital reserve, um, in the amount of two point two million. Uh, the district has set aside a hundred and seven thousand for maintenance reserve, which can be used for, uh, maintenance-type projects. The district has set aside seven hundred twenty-five thousand for tuition reserve, which would go towards any tuition adjustments. Uh, the district has what's referred to as excess surplus designated for subsequent years expenditures. That's fund balance in the amount of one, one million oh seventy-seven that was was to fund the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's the school year you're in right now. The district has also set aside um, written seventy thousand to be used as a revenue source when you prepare your twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The budget John was discussing, you guys are gonna start preparing for. Um, there is two point two million of, of encumbrance. Twenty. And then the last piece of your fund balance would be your unassigned fund balance in the amount of six hundred and forty-two thousand, and that represents, um, two percent of the district's expenditures. As far as recommendations are concerned. Okay. We had four recommendations. Uh, the, the first recommendation was that procedures be reviewed and revised to ensure open purchase orders in a special revenue fund are reviewed at year end and overstated or invalid orders be adjusted accordingly. The second recommendation was that internal controls be enhanced to ensure reimbursement requests are submitted to the state after each bimonthly payroll for the employer's shift of social security. The third recommendation was that budget amendments for the free aid program be approved by board resolution. Fourth recommendation was that, um, amounts paid to vendors through state contract or cooperative purchasing agreements be verified to the state contract and cooperative purchasing documentation. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to address those at this point.
I don't think we have any questions. I'm sure we'll need some time to review this.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. We'll now open it up to committee reports, Mrs. Fratoli. Thank you. Mrs. Villasusso, education.
Yes. Teachers are actively engaging in the district Y P L C using the teacher's letter playbook to enhance instructions. Winter district assessments are concluded and targeted student support programs, including pull-out intervention, rise and shine, bubble booths, and literal tutoring will begin in March. Finally, despite the weakened flu and norovirus season, our district chronic absenteeism is down seven points percent from last year. That concludes my.
Thank you, Mrs. Villasusso. Mr. Manelli for finance.
Uh, we did not need, but we'll repeat again before March eighteen.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy for policy.
Yes, our last meeting, uh, following items will be discussed. Arrest. Uh, H I B, student smoking. Electronics surveillance in school buildings and on the grounds and cooperation for enforcement. Uh, next meeting will discuss a including acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence, A I. Uh, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, use of electronic communication devices, uh, academic integrity, student grievances, food services, a spectator code of conduct for in-class events. That concludes policy.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mealy. Mrs. Patel for transportation.
Yes. Um, we met as a transportation committee today right before our board of ed meeting. Um, we do acknowledge, February third, there was a delayed opening for the school districts as well as the high school. Um, we were, uh, communicated from the high school that, uh, they did not communicate to the high school students of the bus transportation that would be, uh, available and what time, uh, this, you know, obviously has caused a little bit of concern, but we, we have spoken to the Ritual Park High School and we acknowledge, and they have, uh, they're looking, they acknowledge that they did miss sending out this communication and will remediate this going forward. Um, overall, for that day, other transportation that's provided by Littleberry School District went smoothly. That was the only hiccup that we saw.
Mr. Borisak, this is our liaison.
As far as our school or anything going on, other than this Sunday is the Muslim welcoming at three fifteen in Borough Hall.
Great.
We attended it last year. It was a great community event.
It's the, uh, opening to Ramadan.
Yes.
So it's, it really is beautiful. There's home food. Um, and, uh, I mean, it, it is a really beautiful event, so if you have the time, stop by. Um, all right, so Mr. Pyros is here today, but he did provide a Ritual Park liaison report that I will read on his behalf. Um, so below are the notes from last night's Ritual Park Board of Education meeting. The auditors presented the findings from the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit, um, reporting that the Ritual Park fund balance increased by one point two million from the previous year, bringing the total to thirteen point four million. Of that balances include capital reserve, which is approximately nine point five million goodness. Maintenance reserve, approximately one point four million. Tuition reserve, thirty and fifty thousand dollars for the send and receive agreement with Littleberry. Encumbrances, approximately four hundred thousand. Unassigned balance is one point nine million, which is at the maximum one point five percent cap first aid guidelines due to the district having an auditor as opposed to the standard two percent cap. The audit, the audit also resulted in ten rec. Eight were new recommendations, two were repeat recommendations, and two of the ten were identified as significant efficiencies. A detailed corrective act developed and will be filed on behalf of the district to address and resolve the audit findings. Any questions? For some of the board is hearing that. Okay, and while, uh, I the expansion report, um, the reason why I abruptly stopped, John, was because I was, uh, the whole board actually is beyond thrilled to share with the public that we will officially be going out to bid all of our. we will officially be going out to bid all of our um, uh, approvals from O S C, D E P, so on and so forth, has finally been approved. Um, some dates to share with the public is that uh, Tuesday, February twenty fifth will be our bid advertisement. Our pre-bid meeting will be Tuesday, March fourth at two o'clock P M. The last date for questions is Tuesday, March eleventh. And the bid will officially open on Tuesday, March twenty fifth. Just a reminder to the public, it was just a year ago that we passed our referendum. Um, so a massive thank you to the entire board, the expansion committee, Mr. Peripato, Mr. Gomez, R S C Architects, um, Legacy, uh, who's our construction management team. Um, this was a wonderful team. It was a lot of work, it's a lot of hard work. And the fact that we're now going to bid just one year after the referendum um, is very exciting note news, so I hope everybody's as thrilled as we are. Okay, just to manage everybody's expectations. So we'll be going out to bid um, for four weeks, but um, the the, or the actually, the realistic expectation or po- um, potential that will extend that to more weeks, so bid could potentially be six to.
Depending on the amount of questions that come in, timing, uh, March of last, there's a lot of questions that come in. We, we have an understanding with our protect that we are willing to expand for two weeks if we feel that the questions are, are valid and need to be answered. Uh, but that is the time, it's four to six weeks. We're hoping for four, but it is four to six weeks. I just think that's important. When we say March twenty third, everybody's gonna be waiting for, for that app. And it could be a little bit delayed.
Great. Thank you. Um, and now Mr. Kanon, uh, for the N J S B A delegate report.
Uh, the S B A has a upcoming meeting in the beginning of April. There was no meetings.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now open it up to public comment. We'll now take a block vote on F five to F ten, D O fourteen to D O twenty two, P ten to P eighteen, F A two, C three, P two. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Sprenelli.
Yes.
Spirtoli.
Yes.
Mr. Pythros. Mr. Kanon.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Lusuzzo.
Yes.
Mr. Borisak.
Yes.
Patel.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes, but I had stayed from P twenty. Okay.
Motion's passed.
Great. Uh, we'll now open it up for public comment on non-adjunct items. If anybody has any questions, concerns, comments. No? All right, then uh, have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.